The regular meeting of the City of Council of Connersville, Indiana is now in session. Would all rise please? Connie, will you lead this in? A pledge please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Judy Fitchett.
As that you all join me in prayer.
Yes ma'am.
Dear God, we are grateful that you raise up leaders in our community to lead us forward. We now ask your blessing on this group that has gathered here, that we may be of one mind and one unity in what is best for our city and for those that live here. We ask, Lord, that you allow us to put aside our prejudices and our differences, that we may focus on the betterment of this community and of this state, that we may gratify you in the decisions that we make here tonight. We ask all this in the name of God and in Jesus Christ his son. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, would everybody please silence their phones or turn them off? Okay, everybody received a copy of the last minutes of the meeting? Is any additions or corrections? Anybody got any additions or corrections? Okay, none being, I'll take a motion, pass amendments.
Come here.
Say.
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Okay, we have with us tonight Scott Phillips and Canine Officer Chris Scott.
Oh, sir.
Yeah, roll call. Roll call.
Roll call, that's me.
That's you, yeah.
Okay, Councilman Frank?
Here.
Councilman Bishop?
Here.
Councilman Knobby?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery? Councilwoman Phillips?
Here.
Councilman Nutty?
Present.
Councilwoman Durham?
Present.
Now, we'll have Chief D.
Just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to talk about a problem that plagues our community, that's drug abuse. We as police officers, no one here thinks, none of the officers think they can arrest their way out of this problem. We do offer treatment, we have provided or we have worked up a list of treatment options that are local, and I'll pass those out if you guys want a copy of those. Just to go over a few things that we do, we do have a narcotics detective in Scott Phillips, and he's going to come up and present just some numbers to kind of bring it into perspective of what's actually going on in our community. And we also have Lieutenant Chris Scott here with his canine partner Diesel, who's going to do a quick demonstration and talk to you a little bit about what he does. The canines are a big part of drug enforcement, and they're extremely beneficial to us, and he'd like to show you what he does. So we'll start with Detective Scott Phillips, give us your numbers, and then we'll go on to Lieutenant Scott.
Hi.
Hello Scott.
I've got some basic numbers here of what we did last year for the whole year for our task force. Made 57 dealing charges. I didn't have time to get the percentages of these, I'd say 90 percent of these are heroin. 73 conspiracy to deal charges, again, mostly heroin, 83 possession of heroin charges for 212 total arrests. Except for the possession, these were all drug buys that our task force did here in the community, which is a lot. During our buys, we took in 67.5 grams of heroin as evidence, and 4.5 grams of meth on these buys. The heroin's our major problem, the meth's coming on real quick. It's always been like this, I've been doing this for seven and a half years. Once you hit on something, it was prescription pills, then it was heroin, cocaine. Once you hit something, something else comes in, and that's what's happening with meth. The heroin's tougher to get, so they're moving on to something else. So we're going to work on that this year. We'd like to do some interdiction. Again, that's all based on funding and manpower, and these canines are very important to that. We need canines to work this interdiction. We want to try to stop this stuff from coming into our community as best we can. It's a lot easier to do that than it is to try to buy it. So it's a lot quicker to do that. Any questions?
I guess none for you.
I just think you're doing an outstanding job with the resources you have to work with.
We were trying, and I appreciate that. It's, you know, we need a team to do this, it's not one or two guys, we need everybody. The manpower is the key. And that's it, we got some well-trained guys doing this. We're also looking, as Carol said, at some alternatives that are very cheaper, if not free. Our task force started with Susan Sexton coming here, she's affiliated with Unchained Praises, which is a faith-based rehabilitation program. Susan's a certified community health worker and recovery specialist. We've got her coming in once a week, she works out of Wayne County, which is only why she can do it once a week, because she's going to other counties and doing this. Then we get her for four hours a week on Mondays, which is about the best we can do. But we are looking for some other options to get some help here. We deal with a lot of the same people. That's where we're headed with our task force.
Scott?
Yes.
What's the status or how is the needle program, needle exchange program doing?
The exchange program's not something that I'm real familiar with. It's not really something that's going to help us out from a law enforcement perspective. I think they're doing that mostly for the rise of the hepatitis and HIV. I have no stats on that. I can find out if you'd like, to see how it's going.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, the commissioner started that program, so, but we endorse it, so.
You said you seen the rise of meth, are you seeing the large meth labs, more focused on those arise, or the small shaker bottles that they?
We've had the smaller homegrown, the shake and bake labs. That's not what we're seeing anymore. The meth's so cheap that it's coming out of Indianapolis, mostly Cincinnati, and then you can tell it's not homemade meth, it's professional meth.
So they're bought buying then, instead of piecing it like they used to, pretty much?
Well, you know, why go out and try to buy pseudo fed and drain cleaner and risk getting called here when you can go out and buy it for a hundred bucks?
Yeah. Does that, that triggers something when they see you buying all that stuff? That triggers?
That is monitored. There's a national precursor log exchange which is monitored. It's 7.2 grams of pseudo you can purchase in a month, and they'll flag you if you go over that, which happens, which is why a lot of these people get called.
You have more questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott, for coming.
Thank you for your service.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Now we're waiting to see some high-level energy right here.
Make sure you jump in front of him if he's dying.
Oh, either.
He is ready.
All right, good evening, everyone, new faces only. Council here. I'm Lieutenant Chris Scott, I'm assigned to second shift, and I'm one of the two handlers that we have in our department. My current partner, his name is Diesel, Kevin Perry, which works third shift, his partner is named Leo. Okay? Just Chief asked me to give you guys some numbers. Last year, these are last year's stats, we did 47 agency assists, that's us. Our canines going to other agencies around our area and helping them when they need a canine to search a vehicle or to help locate somebody that's fled from them. 38 arrests with the task forces, Detective Phillips, Cameron said, 11 arrests between me and Perry that we've made out here on the street. We also have done 216 hours of training last year, okay? So it's an ongoing training with our partners and an ongoing battle out here on the street. 90 percent of our canines are used for drug enforcement out here, okay? It's very simple and great tool for our belt, as rest of these officers that we work with to go and sniff out and find these drugs that these bad people are hiding from us, okay? Once dog shows any indication of presence that there's narcotics inside of a vehicle, we get to search that vehicle, okay? That's 90 percent of what we do with our dogs here. The other 10, 10 percent is our patrol work, tracking someone, finding someone, clearing the building with the dog, 90 percent of that time is all narcotic work. We also go out and do demonstrations within the public, our schools, we go to our middle school and high school and search the schools. Takes a little time for us to get that coordinated. We have a very good training group here, our city, us and Wayne County and Richmond Police, Union County, we all get together and we train every other Friday for eight hours with these dogs, okay? So it's kind of hard for two dogs just to clear our whole school, so what we'll do is, we'll set up a date, have the other agencies come down and assist us, then we'll go through the lockers and the parking lot. Then in turn, those agencies also call us to come up there and help them, okay? We've been school searches in Cambridge all the way to northeastern, okay? So we call them when we need help, they call us when they need help. Diesel is a, he's five now, he's a five-year-old Belgian Malinois. He's purchased from Violet Kennels, which is a kennel north in Peru, well-known kennel that even the Secret Service gets their dogs from up there. Okay? He was, sorry for all the noise, but they raise this competition dogs in Europe, and then they, after two years of competing, they are sold, the kennels over here, the trainers up there, here, associate the odors here, okay? They're just trained for patrol work, a lot of patrol work over there. Once they come here, then put the dogs on odors, okay? Our dogs are what you call dual-purpose, which they will do patrol and narcotics, okay? He's trained to hit on marijuana, cocaine, crack, heroin, methamphetamine, and ecstasy tablets, okay? All right, they associate those odors with a game between me and him. When he finds those or he smells those, he must respond to that. His response is to sit down and passively stare at it, okay? Once he does that and he tells us that there's something there, we get to search, the only thing he's interested in is getting to play with his tennis ball, okay? So once he finds those odors, it's a game between me and him, he sits down and says, "Hey dad, now I want to play at my tennis ball, you guys go do your thing." So that's 90 percent of the time we do out here, it's no difference in searching inside of a residence, a car, or anything. Once he smells those odors, he's trained to respond, okay? What I have snuck in here earlier and hid some drugs in here, so we're going to do a quick demonstration and let everybody at council and as well as anybody watching, what the dog's trained to do when he finds those odors. My job is, is to put Diesel in a position where he needs to work, okay? They go off the cues, hand signals, or whatever, so I'll simply bring him up, and all I have to do is act like I threw a tennis ball, and that's a cue to him that we're ready to play a game, okay? So, here. As you can see, these type of breeds of dogs, they just love to work, he'll just start, anywhere they come out, anytime they come out of the car, usually they'll just start sniffing around and sniffing for stuff, okay? Other than being at home, here. Okay, I just threw the ball, gave him, made him search, so. Little sniff around everywhere.
Oh.
First catch.
Okay, in this little metal box, early as I said, I placed some drugs in there, that's actually 28 grams of cocaine, okay? These drugs are issued to us by the DEA, so we actually have a DEA license, we use these to train our dogs with, okay? They're removed from the station and then they're locked back up, okay? So he's gonna, he's gonna lock up and stare at it, he probably thinks somebody else has the ball.
He's a girl. He doesn't exist a lot.
So as you guys can see, once he's rewarded for what he's done, that's all he's interested in. Once he does that and shows us that there's something there inside of a car, a house or whatever, it's our job, it's our job to go find it and finalize where it's at, okay? He'll just give us a general area where it's at, hey, I smell this, and so, you know, great, excellent tool for us to have, best job moment in case department. Any questions?
Is he that high-energy at home? Is he that high-energy at home?
He relaxes at home. If he, he comes in the house, he'll usually start sniffing around, but, you know, like it usually turns into a train wreck, because they just, that on and off switch, they sometimes have to shut it off and turn it off for them, but.
I'll say if he's that high-energy at home, you poor fellow.
Yeah.
That's when you get him a tennis ball.
Do these dogs have to stay on any kind of special diet? I mean, I'm sure they do, but.
Dr. Keith Faber provides veterinary care for our dogs. Hills Pet Food in Richmond. These dogs are taken care of better than we are. Hills Pet Food in Richmond supplies free dog food for these dogs. All we have to do is call them and say, "I'm out of food," and they'll say, "Come up," and they usually give us four or five bags at a time. They have all of our dogs, Wayne County's dogs, Richmond's dogs, Union County, and several other dogs within this area. All we have to do is call them, and they will, they will give us dog food, okay? So, and it's, and dog food's pretty, $40 a bag, so, pretty, pretty nice dog food.
You know, the board of works meeting today, you explained how that, Officer Perry, did you explain that? Because, you know, these people, they come up with the money here, so they might want to hear this view here, go ahead.
Officer Perry's vehicle is equipped with a, what we call a bailout system, okay? It's a, and it's, and he also has a, it's also a heat sensor in his vehicle, okay? He has a little pager that he wears on his pistol belt, okay? And it also has two buttons on there. What it's designed to do, if an officer is outside of his vehicle and he is in trouble, like I said, these dogs, our partners, are also trained to protect us. He can hit a button on his, on that pager, and it will pop, a remote door popper will pop the door open for the dog to come out and help him, okay? It is also a heat sensing device and a computer in there, then if it gets too hot inside the car, there, I can't give you a familiar, I can't give you a certain number, but there are, you guys watch the news, there are canines lost in the line of duty because the officer's car shut off for some unreason, and the dog overheats, and they lose a canine, okay? The system that Officer Perry has in his vehicle protects the canine from that. If it gets too hot in there, it'll send a page to his, to that pager on his pistol belt, and the windows will roll down. I've seen some, several trainings in school, that the alarm will go off, the windows will roll down, and the lights will come on, and the sirens will go off. And that canine officer knows, hey, my partner's in trouble, it's gotten too hot in my vehicle, and I've actually seen it happen before an officer's car shut off for some unknown reason. Yeah, it was during the summer, and he had the air conditioner on, and all the lights, sirens going off, and windows rolling down, and everybody's, we're all standing there, but that's what happened. So I know Manya, who puts on the paws in the park, who loves these dogs like they're hers also, every year she raises money to help us to buy those items, officer. I believe he's retired now, canine baker's dog, the Jinx, they had one in their vehicle. Perry has got one, so hopefully this year I will be able to get one to protect, you know, our partner. And you're talking well over a $16,000 investment here that we need to protect, so. Mayor wants me to bring that up, so.
How much you want it to run?
What's the cost of that?
I don't know, I can get you some numbers. I really don't know at the top of my head, I'm, you know, so we'll look into some numbers and we'll come back and let you know.
And you've already put a lot of time and investment to get the dog, correct?
Yes, yes.
Then you did personal fundraising and?
Yeah, all our dogs are purchased through, we go out and seek donations from certain organizations, the Eagles, VFWs, American, the American Legions, they all chip in and help us purchase these dogs, purchase the dogs and the trainings, so, you know, hats off to them too, so.
It's FOP this year. I went out there and they was having all this training, and they had, I think it was Officer Perry's dog, and they had a guy dressed in, what do they call that suit?
It's called a bite suit.
Bite suit. And he was out there, and he was fighting him, he hit that button, and that door popped open, and that dog would take off, and the guy would start running, he'd nail him.
Yeah, that equipment that we wear, it's equipment that protects us from, we all have to put the suits on and hide from our dogs and do different training, but that's equipment that's used to protect us, and we all, I mean, I like getting in the bite suit just as well as the other officers. Like I said, we all, we all train together, we all take turns taking the bites, and, you know, it's just, they're a, they're a great asset to this department and other agency. I wish we had more, I really do, but I understand, but.
Is the $16,000, is that, where does that fall in the price range for these dogs? Is that low end, high end, you know?
To get, they're, I mean, they have dogs up there at the kennel, like it's over 20,000. You're looking at different titles for the dog, you got PH1, PH2. If a dog actually competes and wins, you know, they get different type of titles for the dogs. Both of our dogs are from, I'm very fortunate, both of our canines are from, it's a kennel in Holland's called KMPB, so both of Diesel and Leo are from the same kennel over there.
Wow, thank you.
So does that mean the training's comparable? Incompatible, so you both do the same thing?
Yeah, they're big, they're huge competition clubs over there. And guys, and guys and girls go to work, and then after they get off work, they go to their kennel, and they, they work with these dogs every day.
I noticed there's not a minute that goes by that you don't look at him. Does he, is that part of it?
I just have to watch what he's doing.
Like a little kid.
It's a three-year-old, and you always gotta watch and see what he's doing, or what he's, uh, he's pretty happy now, he's got his ball, he's got that all slobbered up, but if he didn't, he'd be all over the place in here, so.
I imagine he doesn't get too far from you then?
No, no, he doesn't.
Well, thanks, Chris, for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is some appointments. I have to make an appointment at the solid waste district. The council person's supposed to serve on it. Is there anyone interested, Connie?
I will continue if that's.
Okay, so that's my appointment for the solid waste district. And at the same time, President Knobby here has got some appointments to finish making.
Yeah, I talked with several people about the redevelopment commission, to serve on that again. Several people expressed interest, but I wanted to check, I checked with Colleen Frame and Jeff Freeman, see if they'd be interested in serving, again, since they just served on it recently. Both of them expressed interest, so we can either appoint them or some of the other folks that expressed interest. I kind of feel like we should probably let the folks that had that opportunity or done that opportunity have a crack at it again, but really it's up to you guys.
You and I had discussed that.
Yeah, I agree.
Thought that we should first talk with them, see what their interest is. You've got the experience. I do like the people who are on there, Colleen and Jeff, and I'd recommend making a motion that we reappoint Colleen and Jeff to the redevelopment committee or commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further nominations? Say no, close. All those in favor of Colleen Frame and Jeff Freeman for the redevelopment commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, they're appointed.
I'd like to thank the people who did express interest.
Yeah, absolutely. We got a lot of interest on it, it was very good.
We did, absolutely. What's the length of that term?
One year, I think. One year, yeah.
So that could change. So stay tuned. Right. We'll keep your names in mind.
I was very pleased to see how many people come out and said that, that they're interested. We still have a few left on urban enterprise zone, and a bit in the business for urban enterprise zone, and a resident, so.
I have a business, his name is Chris Carcy, and he has Caliber Property Management. The address is Central Avenue, so I think he's in that zone.
All right, good, we can go ahead and make that appointment today. Is there any nomination for the business for the urban enterprise zone? Say none of those will be closed.
I don't know the gentleman, but he comes recommended by you.
He's the nephew, he's the nephew of Brian Carcy.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
The dad of the girl that has the horse.
Oh, yeah. Last year, yeah.
All in favor of, what was the title of that again, Carcy what?
Caliber Property Management.
Caliber. All in favor of Carcy Caliber, Caliber Property Management, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Press your passes.
I have one for, in mind for a res, or I have one that's made a request for the resident, and I should be able to present that by the next meeting.
Outstanding, and that'll be our last one for the year.
All right. That's it? Okay, we have a resolution 2016-1, it's a reimbursement, it's back to the police department to use, and so I need a, any discussion on that or anything? I mean, they're giving money back to us, so I don't think we're going to gripe about that too much, so I'll need a motion on that, please.
Mr. Mayor, may we accept resolution 2016-1?
Is there any more discussion?
I'll say.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, we got $283 back. Okay, now we're going to open up the, we got a pending ordinance, 3237, it's a vacated alley, and so what I'd like to do is open it up for a public hearing, so I'm gonna close the meeting and open up for a public hearing. Anybody from the public, anybody got anything to say about closing the alley? Would you like to speak to it, Carol?
I mean, I'm going to introduce you to Tim Schotmer, he's our CFO for FCM Bank, I don't know if you want to say a few words, but we appreciate it, and Stephen Perez also here.
Well, just as far as vacating the alley, obviously FCM Bank, we're building a new branch here in town, and very excited about moving our Everton branch into Connersville and serving this community from a much better location. The alley in question, our building is going to be on one side of it and a parking lot on the other side, and we just feel that it'll increase the safety of our employees if that alley is vacated. It will take a surface that is maintained by the city off their roll, and will just improve the location and just kind of enhance the whole branch and what we're doing, so.
And there's no objections in the, there's no other properties involved in that over there? There's no objections?
There is one other property, but I don't think we have any objection.
No, because we're supposed to get the other half, that'll be added to our property.
Okay.
Because we have a CNET flat in the back, and we used the alley to drive back to get that. get that. So, if we don't get that whole alley, we can't, do not have any way of getting back to that area. So, they agreed to let us have half the alley.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Uh-huh, yes. So, therefore it takes that part off the books for us maintaining it also?
Yes, that be, that deed has already been...
Yeah, we've already prepared the deed so that we'll have like the full width of the alley on one half and then the Friends property will have the full width of the alley on the other half and...
All right.
Okay. Thank, is there, is there anyone else that'd like to come up and speak to this? Well, at this point in time, I'll close the public hearing and open up the meeting. Council, what's your, you got, you got any discussion on this?
I had a question, uh, this is probably for John. John, where it says, uh, Josh Harland's First Edition, is that a company or, and the ordinance sits in the, uh, second paragraph there refers to it, lots 59, 60, and 85 of Josh Harland's First Edition in Connersville, City of Connersville, and you...
That's a plat, an early plat of the, that portion of the City of Connersville.
Okay.
Yeah, Joshua Harland. Uh, I think that was the second plat after John Harland's first plat.
Okay.
Wow.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
I'll make a motion that we pass, um, pending ordinance 6297.
Need a second?
Or, sorry, 3237.
Did I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, do we want to move on to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to the third and final reading. Is there any more, any more discussion? Okay, I'll ask for the, I'll ask the, is there, I'll ask the question, or...
I'd make a motion if we approve this resolution, pending resolution 3237.
37. Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the alley is yours.
Thank you.
Okay, normally we have department reports, but what we've done is, you know, uh, we cut them. We have reports for the departments out there on the, out there in the hallway. If anybody's interested in the department reports, the council got theirs on Wednesdays, on Wednesday. So, if anybody has any questions for our department heads that are here...
I do appreciate that, early receiving, absolutely, those.
Okay. So, does anybody have any questions for the department heads?
Everyone wants to know, how's, how's the business going?
That truck's going pretty good. We've, uh, filled out 104 runs so far and right at $116,000 that's been billed out. We've just started getting some of the Medicare payment in and it's right around $7,000 we've just started getting in and everything's working good. Phil thought he'd have the other truck running maybe the end of this week, end of next week, it depends if everything falls into place and how much snow we get.
Is, do they, do they have like a calculation of like how many cents to the dollar that you theoretically make? Do they?
It hasn't, well...
Not everybody understands what you bill is not always what you get.
Right. It, uh, I don't have no figures with me. Medicare pays, uh, and I'm just gonna use numbers, I don't have the exact, but we'll bill out, say, $600, but your Medicare might only pay $238 and then they might only pay out of a $16 a mile load charge, they'll pay $7 and some odd cents for the first 11 mile and then that will drop down a little bit, but your primary insurance will pay the whole $16. I mean, it's, so it's, it all fluctuates. When we done the study with ABS, it was all figured off of the lowest prices, so we should still be, be okay.
Right, okay.
So, $116,000, is that including December and current?
Yes, that's December and January. Up to today.
Was any of that, you may not know the answer to this, but any of that $116,000 in this December report?
No.
So, that's, okay, so that's in addition to this then. How long does it generally take for payments?
Well, they told us that we should start receiving them within 10 to 12 days. And she told me today, they have just started receiving them back from Medicare. They haven't got anything from Medicaid yet. She didn't exactly know why, other than maybe the holidays, but that's where we're at there and normal insurance, uh, they said could take up to six months. Make a change back.
That's, I don't know, it's quicker than... Yep, that's it.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, does anybody have any old business?
I, I did, this is, I did talk to Daryl about the handicap sign, uh, parking sign on Grand Avenue. He said that should be in by Friday.
Okay.
There were several things that had to occur before they could install. It's not just putting a stink in the ground anymore, but he did say it should be in by Friday, so...
Anybody else got anything?
I appreciate, uh, city TV and county utilities and the manner in which they presented their reports, very professional, uh, easy to read, uh, I just, uh, all the other, I understand also, it just takes a little bit for me to read it where others present it really well, uh, just like what they do. And, uh, God bless the utility workers, they're out on another pretty bad leak, so...
Yes.
We appreciate their hard work in all kinds of weather.
Well, you know, that's one of the things I was talking about, all the, we have a lot of people out there in the bad weather and sometimes, you know, the workers are the city and they're the ones out there doing the work and we're sitting in here in the warm and they're outside, so we appreciate all what they do and thank you, so. As far as miscellaneous business, the mayor's update, the furnace went out here today, so we got it repaired, we've been, got all the moving done, now we're starting to do the finesse work and so everything's going good. My first 19 days are going well and so I'm still in my honeymoon with the city and the workers, so I appreciate all that and, uh, that's, that's my part. Now we'll open it up for public forum. Has anybody from the public got anything?
Mr. Mayor, I do. It's not public, but...
Okay, go ahead.
Shut it down. I did just want to say, um, you know, we took, we talk about building community support and community draw and that's something I'm very big in, but, um, I would encourage everyone to support our, our basketball program right now, our men's basketball. Um, I remember when I was in high school, it was a packed house. I mean, you couldn't get in, it was standing room only. Our boys are doing great. And it's not just our boys' basketball, but it's all sports, uh, but it's pretty, I was pretty disappointed. We had a very big game Saturday night and the bowl was only about half full and, you know, that's part of the, one of the things we can do as a community to start acting and feeling like a community drawing together is to come support our basketball team. Those are memories that I'll never forget when it was full and I'm trying to pass those on to my kids so they will have those memories instilled and want to be part of themselves. Uh, but tonight they're playing out of town and then they will have a game Saturday night, so come, I'll encourage the community and everyone involved, come support our boys 'cause they're good. I'm enjoying watching them. They, they play very good together. Even if you don't like basketball, just come have fun.
Aren't they like 10 and 3?
Yeah. Hopefully 11 and 3 after the ride.
Yeah, let's keep this right, you know? I, I've been coaching girls for eight years and so let's support those girls program too, you know? Don't leave them girls out.
But let's start, let's just support our kids.
You'll go again tomorrow.
You know?
Okay. Well, thank you.
I do have something you got off miscellaneous business, I'm sorry I didn't speak of, but I think it would be nice and appropriate if we get an update from all the office heads of their manpower, uh, by seniority and by department, just to give the new council an idea of how many is in each department, because we have had some changes since the addition with the EMS and we've had some changes with people retiring and unfortunately passing away and whatever, so it would just be a good idea to have that on a piece of paper with all the departments and how many heads works in each department, if we could get that, please.
I think we can work that out.
Please, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anything from the, for the public forum? Anybody got anything out there to say?
Well, I think it's good that Mike mentioned that, but I think the public, you know, the people who's watching TV ought to find that out too.
Okay.
What, how much you're spending and the reports of all the people.
Well, they're, okay. I was gonna say that, that there's the, the department reports are out there on that table, so anybody wants one?
I understand that, but you, that's what people watch is Channel 3 for, to get there. And I think it's very important and why I cut that off, 'cause they're not gonna come in and sit. I think it's important that you got the time to save the reports, like they've got it before, Dan Parker and everybody.
Well, Dan Parker's gonna be up in February.
I'm just saying, I think it's nice you got the public, you know?
Were you thinking on the lines of like, um, how many people like are employed at the, say, street department?
Exactly. It's just very simple.
Just in what, maybe like, in what job capacity and...
However, how technical they want to get with it. I just want to know how many people's working in each department, because we've had so many, we've had several changes since the last administration in some of the departments and EMS is one prime example. We've added, what, five heads today, I think? Six. And it'd just be nice to have that on a piece of paper to look at, so everybody knows how many people's working in what department.
And what the minimum is versus how many we have.
Exactly.
Five years ago versus five years ago or...
Well, it doesn't have to be that complicated, but it can be however far you want to go with it.
Not complicated.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Okay, I'll, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Adjourn.